Ready? Okay. Would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held July 2nd, 2018. Item B, approve a correction of plat- correcting the address for lot B-1B, block 1 of Plaza Terrace Edition, Section 2, being located north of Southwest 19th Street and west of Telephone Road. Item C is consider approval of a one-year contract extension with Hawaiian Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services. Item D is consider approval of a one-year contract extension with CEC Corporation for professional engineering services. Item E is consider approval of one-year contract extension with Mischak and Associates PLC for pro- excuse me, professional engineering services. Item F is consider approval of a one-year contract extension with Kavanus Engineering for professional engineering services. Item G is consider approval of a one-year contract extension with Duvoit and Tush- LLP for internal audit services. And H is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017-2018 in the amount of $4,621,223.61.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of a revocable permit for 252 Southeast 26th Street to allow an above-ground swimming pool to be located in a platted utility easement. Application by Jim Walruf, this is an order.
Mayor and council, the applicant at 252 Southeast 26th Street applied for a building permit to install a 24-foot above-ground pool. This application was denied because of an encroachment on a platted 50-foot rear utility easement. This utility easement actually comes all the way up to the applicant's rear patio line, so there really is very limited room to utilize his backyard. And working with the applicant to come up with a solution to this situation, a revocable permit was suggested, and we do agree that this would be an appropriate use of such a permit. The pool will sit in, within the 50-foot utility easement, but will not directly impact any of the utilities that are there. There is a site plan on page 165 of your packet. It is an above-ground pool. It's over an in-ground OG&E line. However, OG&E has given permission for this to occur. This permit will be filed at Cleveland County if approved tonight, and it does give the city the right to have the pool removed at any time that the easement is needed. That would also allow for OG&E to begin the process to remove the pool as well if they need to access their line. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The applicant's variable with this?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider nominating and appointing a city council representatives to a building and development advisory committee to consider recommendations for building and development code updates. Anybody want to be on that?
I make a motion to nominate Melissa.
One?
I'll do that.
Well, it's very much what Melissa does.
Tell us about it.
Sure, so Councilwoman Hunt and actually Councilman Ham served on this committee several years ago after the tornado. It's where we developed the wind-resistant framing code. And that is one of the things that we would be working on this time as well. Some updates to that. There's been some new technologies come out that we feel like we should look at to see if they can fit within the framework we've started. At that time, we had three council members on the committee. We had Councilman Ham, Hunt, and then Councilman Kavner. And obviously, Councilman Kavner is no longer here, so it's the council's pleasure as to how many and who would like to serve on this committee.
Lauren Halli can not do it. I've done, I'm on some other stuff, so if there's others.
Sure.
Okay. The two of you?
Louis.
Did you, either one of you two want to do it?
I'm good.
You sure? You can have one more.
I think that's why Danielle responded so quickly.
No, actually, it's because this is very much what Melissa does in her real life, so I feel like she probably has a little bit more knowledge than I would.
Okay.
Well, then I make a motion to nominate Louis and Melissa.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Congratulations. Item number five is consider rezoning application number RZ-974, located in the southwest quarter of Section 22, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 17th Street and west of Telephone Road to amend the existing R4 plan unit development to allow for a maximum of a three-story height. And approve ordinance number 88418, application by Belmont Development Company.
Mayor and council, this site is located to the north of Southwest 17th and Street and west of South Telephone Road. It is the extreme southwest corner lot in the redevelopment site, and there's a, there's a map of the site on page 170 of your packet, so it's just the one commercial lot that is on the corner of 17th and Max Morgan Boulevard. This property was rezoned to R4 as a planned unit development in 2016. The approved PUD provided for a maximum density of 28 units per acre with a variety of amenities and design considerations, one of those being that on this commercial lot, it had a height restriction of two stories. That height restriction was put in as a transitional buffer to the residential properties on the west, or I'm sorry, east side of Janeway because we envisioned the, the project being three-story and then transitioning down to a two-story, then to single-family. Since the time of the original PUD approval, the, the developer that we have identified has provided a more detailed layout than what was done with the master plan and also a more detailed economic pro forma of the project. To realize their target of approximately 230 units, which is a lot less than what was originally envisioned, they are proposing a four-story apartments on the west side of the redevelopment site, which is allowed in the PUD. As it relates to this site that we're talking about tonight, the likely build-out scenario is for a mixed-use lot with small live-work units, where you would have a business on the bottom floor and a living unit on the top floor. And to meet the 230 units that is their target, they would need to have an addition of a third story on this lot. So, in looking at that, we did look at the comprehensive plan and the redevelopment master plan. This application still promotes our core goals of mixed-use, interaction with the trail along Janeway Creek, and accessibility, accessibility through the site with reconnecting Max Morgan and Southwest 17th Street. So this application is in compliance with the master plan. The PUD amendment request is being made after a lot of investigations for alternatives to meet the citing, the site redesign requirements. The applicant does feel that in order to create this viable mixed-use project, that a live-work environment will be essential, and to make that work, you have to have more residential units. Staff does believe that this PUD amendment request preserves a transitioning technique that was originally envisioned by having four stories on the west side stepping down to a three-story on the east side. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of this rezoning application. And just as a side note, we did receive the elevations for the proposed project, and we are convening the design review committee, so that will be convening in early August, we believe, to go over the elevations thoroughly for approvals.
Are we, are we going to sprinkle this since it's a PUD?
Yes, sprinkling is required.
And did planning commission hear this last week?
They did. They did, yes, I'm sorry. It was approved unanimously, which at the moment is eight-zero, and there were no citizens at the planning commission to speak.
Okay, good.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Are there any citizens here tonight? I was just curious. Okay.
Does anyone like to speak on this? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number six is discuss and consider changing the street name of Janeway Avenue West of Janeway Creek from Southwest 17th Street to Southwest 10th Street to Dreason Drive. Application by the City of Moore Planning Commission will hear this item on July the 10th. Why aren't we changing the name?
Well, as you are probably aware, Janeway in this location is a little bit unusual in that it was originally constructed or designed as a boulevard, but it was never actually executed that way. It's actually two legs of Janeway that have two-way traffic on each leg. That creates a lot of confusion for visitors, and unless you're familiar with Moore and how things work, it's, it can be very confusing. So with the development of the park in the redevelopment site, it's been brought to my attention that with the way Janeway is developed currently, it would be having trouble addressing anything within the park because you'd be duplicating an address on the other side of the Janeway leg. So we felt it was important to at least explore the option of renaming the street to Dreason Drive. We chose the name Dreason because it does have historical roots going back to the original owner of that site. If this is approved, the renaming of the street will affect seven property owners who currently are addressed from the south Janeway, just north of the city's redevelopment site. The city does recognize that this would be inconvenient. We don't normally change street names. Sometimes it's unavoidable. What the city will do is take care of changing the street name within the city records as well as the county records and notify the post office, but it would be up to the, each property owner to notify all of their bills and other utilities. And so, planning commission did recommend approval of this item, eight to zero, which would be unanimously, and there were no citizens at the planning commission meeting to speak on the site.
And how many residential addresses did that impact?
Several.
Seven. Is there, is there anybody here that would like to speak on this issue? No? Well, businesses will be able to get their pizzas now.
Were, were they all notified? Because I know that the planning usually, I'm not sure if anything, it's 300 feet, but they were all notified?
Yes, all seven addresses were notified about 20 days prior to the planning commission.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the name change.
Okay.
Sergeant.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion from council? If not, would you call for a vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes. Thanks. Item number seven, consider ordinance number 88518 adopting and enacting a new code for the City of Moore, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing for a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective.
Mayor and council, item seven, eight, and nine are essentially companion items. Item seven is the ordinance that if you approve it, will adopt our new code after our recodification. That recodification has brought in all of the amendments that have been done since the last one, any ordinances that were required to be changed by state law. So if you approve item seven, that will adopt our new code. Items eight and nine are required by state law to have the resolution requiring our code to be down, the code to be placed in the law library in Cleveland County.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, we have a motion and a second. On item number seven, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider adopting resolution number 90318 directing the filing and notification of the publication of the code of Moore, Oklahoma.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider adopting resolution number 90418 directing the filing and notification of the publication of the Moore Land Development Code.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of a new job description for the position of animal adoption coordinator and approve placement in pay grade 106 of the city's salary table approved by the city council on June 20th, 2016, effective July 1, 2016. New resources.
Mayor and council, prior to the classification and compensation study and the subsequent approval and implementation effective July 1, 2016, the city did have an animal adoption coordinator job description. However, the position was vacant at the time and did not get transferred. The position was discussed in the budget sessions this year and has now been included in the budget. We're asking you to consider approval of the actual job description and its placement in pay grade 106. And step one of pay grade 106 is $31,830. Staff recommends approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
A second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider approval of a budget supplement for FY 17-18 to budget increase Parks Department revenues and related expenses and approve a transfer from the general fund to the MITA fund. This is through.
Mayor and council, budget amendment 18-17 will budget increased revenue received by the Parks Department in concession and park pass sales and to budget the related expenses. This amendment will also allow for the transfer of funds from the general fund to MITA to close out operating expenses related to the economic development that have accumulated over the past several years. And for fiscal year 19, these operating expenses have been budgeted in the managerial department of the general fund.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 12 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held July 2nd, 2018. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017-2018 in the amount of $1,224,058.33.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number 13 is also a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held July 2nd, 2018. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017-2018 in the amount of $204,492.10.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. On a consent docket, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Item number, I don't, is this, is, is that you? Okay.
Let me call the roll, please.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Glenn Lewis? I think I've already called Glenn Lewis.
You did.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Item 15 is consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held June 18, 2018.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second is there? Consent docket, would you call the roll, please?
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Item 16 is consider a budget supplement for FY 17-18 to budget proceeds from the 2017 sales tax note and related expenses and funds from citizens, citizen proceeds on the Pole Road project.
Yes, this is budget amendment 18-18 will budget the proceeds we received from the 2017 sales tax note and budget the related expenses for issuance caused in construction. This amendment will also budget funds received from a citizen who partnered with the city on the Pole Road project and budget the related expenses. Council approved this partnership on June 20, 2016.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Glenn, would you call the roll, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. This is this one?
It's me.
The mayor?
It's me. No, it's economics, no, we just finished that one. It's weird, new business.
Oh, sorry. I see that. Okay, let the record reflect that all the people that were here before are still here. Item number 17 is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak? If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly, yes. Uh, thank you, mayor and council. My name is Brandon Bagwell. I live at 612 Northwest 18th Street in Moore. The item that I'd like to speak with you about right now is, it's personal as well as citywide, I suppose. I've lived at this address for about nine years now. Been a Moore resident my whole life, actually. The question that I have is, what I'm noticing in property values across our city is that there's a lot of disproportionate growth primarily on the south part of Moore. As we know, in the last, say, five years or so, the Fritz Farm development area and region has ballooned in the number of commercial developments that have happened there, while myself being on the northern part of Moore, sandwiched between South Oklahoma City, has seen significantly less growth. Property values in the new Moore addition, which is the area of Moore in which I live, have been stagnant to the point where our property taxes, in addition to inflation, no longer account for the appreciation of the properties. We're starting to see, I feel, a massive conversion of the number of owners into rental housing, and I will say that it's definitely not felt the same way on the southern part of Moore. Personally, I'm bringing this issue forward, council, as a concerned citizen, more than offering specific remedies. I like to think that there are professionals here that can come up with particular solutions. But the items that come to mind would be potentially even considering a moratorium on commercial development south of, southeast 4th Street. I don't know what other type of issues there are, or if there's really a call to action that I can provide, but that is a topic I think is appropriate for this forum.
We don't really own any property.
Well, of course.
The city doesn't, and it would be unfair for us to ban somebody from putting a business on their own property. So it would, to do a moratorium on new building wouldn't be a good idea for the city. We have to continue to grow. And what you're asking for is you want your property to go up more, so your taxes will go up more, right?
I'd be quite happy with that, to be honest.
And I do, in his defense, I do think that he's, I mean, I've had that complaint as well, that there's not much growth on the north side, and I think some of the north side of Moore in War II feel like the city has forgotten about them, although I assure they haven't. Some of it is just where businesses want to go, but I do think we can maybe put a little bit more concentrated effort on looking at that.
We do, we do have residential developments, new ones, that are continuing to come up to the north part of Moore where I live, live my whole life, so we definitely, all of us, want Moore to be successful. I'd love for new businesses to open up in the north part of Moore, but I'm glad they're coming to Moore. But we do promote Moore, and there are new businesses that open there regularly, maybe Maybe not as much, obviously not as much as what's happening down on 19th, but Moore's still growing. And we do, we do, I know I'm pretty adamant about older businesses that are not maintaining their properties well. We make sure the code enforcement goes out and visits them and ensures that they make the improvements and repair parking lots and buildings and windows, so we're, we are very aware, aware, aware of the older infrastructure in the northern part of Moore.
Certainly. I guess the last point I'll ask then is, in the, in the promotion of Moore as a place to do business and commerce, is it, am I correct in assuming that no part of, no, sub-part of Moore is receiving a benefit that another part is not? In other words, we are promoting Moore as a whole, not necessarily regions or wards or anything of that sort through, through code expenses or, or policy?
No, and I, I remember when I first got on the council, Councilman Roberts reminded me that the city is divided up into wards. However, we're one city, and so every one of us up here wants what's going to be best for all of our city. And if everybody wants to build down on 19th, that's good, as long as we can manage it and deal with all the traffic and other things that that brings, but that also brings revenue to our city, and when we do the residential street repair, that's divided evenly among all of the districts, not any, one part of the city gets one and the other. We try to, to be fair in, in all we do.
And I know when Deidre's out there promoting Moore, she's showing them all parts of Moore, not just 19th Street. And a lot of times, they choose 19th Street, but I think she's out there promoting all of Moore, so.
Terrific.
I also think it's something that we can have a continued conversation about as, even before us. It's not something we're necessarily expecting to hear tonight, but I thank you for coming because there's lots of people that have those ideas and have thoughts, and we never hear them.
Certainly.
So I know that there's a whole plethora of people that are much better at this than, than the average Joe, and I, I think that we can keep having conversations about how to make it better, how to improve on a code enforcement or whatever that might be.
Certainly. I, I guess I'll just close with, if there's any way I can help with those conversations or discussions, I'm more than happy to be part of them as well personally.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, item number 17 is new business for citizens. Item B is items for city council or trustees. Okay, item C is items for the city manager, trust manager.
Mayor and council, just real quickly, I'd like to thank Randy Brink and Linda Stewart for all their hard work on the recodification. This was something that's needed to do for a long time, and I appreciate Linda's efforts. Linda was kind of the driving force behind this and wouldn't let it get sidetracked, so thank you, Linda. Yes, yes.
Appreciate that. Good job. Okay, item 18 is adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. There is no further discussion. Would you call for the vote?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, adjournment. Thank you for coming.